Again, the meeting is being recorded so we can put this up online afterwards. So folks who couldn't attend tonight can check it out. And then one more time, if whoever is on the call as just the S on the screen, if you could just identify yourself at some point, either staying out or pop your name in the chat, that'd be great, just so that we can put it in the minutes. So we have attendance covered. So the night's hearing is regarding the governance charter, the draft of which was posted to the website. The backstory on this governance charter. At town meeting last year, there were three articles that involved the municipal wastewater project. One was the establishment of sewer reserve fund, which is a reserve fund to hold the funds that would go towards, you know, paying the debt service on the loan, on the final loan. The second one was a tax rate question, which asked the voters to approve a increase on the municipal tax rate, not to exceed a certain amount to support debt service on that loan. And the third question was a local option tax. The sewer reserve fund and local option tax passed. The tax rate question did not. The tax rate, I'm sorry, the local option tax, even though it passed, the town cannot unilaterally institute a local option tax at this time. The way that legislation works right now is that a community has to meet certain, it's a little bit confusing, but it's a benchmark of grand list value at a certain time, a certain year going backwards in order to allow them to institute one on their own. There's relatively few communities in the state that can do that unilaterally. Most of them are bigger towns. And so there was a bill, still is a bill in Senate Finance, which would allow all towns to institute a local option tax. The hope was that that was going to pass last session. It's still stalled and the outlook of it looks like it probably will remain stalled. The chair of that committee, I don't think, likes to go much for whatever reason. So in order to institute a local option tax in the town of Montgomery, the town needs to pass a governance charter, which gives us the ability to do that. And that's where this governance charter is coming from. Real quickly, I guess I will just say for those who weren't at the select board meeting Monday, we do have the financing package essentially baked to execute on the project without impacting the municipal tax rate. This will all be in the town report with all of the numbers in there for folks to review as well as a narrative explanation of where the funds are coming from. But the long and short of it is after a lot of back and forth with the state, the state's going to give us two separate ARPA grants to basically fill the gap left by the tax rate question failing and the remainder of the funding that was left the donut hole so that just the local option tax can service the debt on the system if we go ahead and build it. So the local option tax would be needed to do that in order to make the fund package work. I'm happy to talk about that more a little later if folks want. But again, all of those numbers will be in the town report with the amounts, the sources and how it plays into the overall project budget. So the draft that was on the website was a draft that was drawn up with the assistance of an attorney. Essentially, you know, what goes into a governance charter? It's a little bit, I don't know what the right word is, but a governance charter can have anything the town wants to have in it. You can go online to the state of Vermont's, I'll just look at the legislature's website and you can like search for governance charters. They're now baked into state statute because when a town adopts a governance charter, the legislature has to then approve it. So you can go online and find all sorts of them. Some of them are very long, some of them are not long. One that I'll point to, if you want to look at, is the town of Elmore instituted a local option tax. Their charter is literally just one clause about the local option tax. Other towns have got a laundry list of other things that go into it. The draft that you have before you, the advice of the attorney was that if you're going to do a charter, you know, why don't you actually build out the framework of what he described as being kind of like the basis of a basic framework of a governance charter, which outlines, you know, how the town is governed with all the things that you see here. And then attached to that, you can add things like a local option tax or other kind of bells and whistles that you want to add to the charter. So that's what's in here. But again, all the stuff that's in here does not need to be in here in order to make the local option tax part of this pie kind of work. The other side of that coin of having this whole fleshed out governance charter thing is that once it's in the charter, we got to do it. So if something changes down the line and we want to do something differently, if it's in the charter, we'd have to go back and amend the charter to do it differently. All of this is caveat on the fact that we have to follow state law and a lot of this stuff is already in state law. So the question in the chat was the attorney is Paul Gillies that we used. He's an attorney that specializes in municipal law, his firm. And just real quick, just for the minutes, whoever's on is S in the chat box. If you could just identify yourself just for the minutes, that would be fantastic, just so we can get the name there. So that's kind of like a quick overarching framework of what's in here, why it's in here and what the objective is behind this. I've had some comments come in by email that I can, we can discuss, but I want to open the floor up now to any questions, comments, feedback that people might have. And we can dig into broader discussion around it. Don't be shy. Come on.
Hey Charlie, I want to say first, that's a really, really great summation of a very, very complicated issue. That you did a good job there of explaining why we have to do what we have to do. Do we have any estimate that we've calculated on what the revenue amount is going to be from the local option tax for Montgomery?
Yeah, we do. Give me one second and I will pull that up. We did that as part of the financing, the financing plan, and I can send this out or make it available. It might be on the Thrive's website too. The local option tax was estimated to generate $35,000 annually. $35,000 annually is what the local option tax is estimated to generate based on the study that we did. And right now, the estimated annual debt payment on the loan that we're looking at is 31,463, four, sorry, let me say that one more time, $31,463. That's the estimate right now of what the debt service would be. Huh, yeah, whoever that S is doesn't identify themselves, but they're awful cute in the chat, so I appreciate it. Yeah, so that's what the debt service would be and that's what the local option tax would raise.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions or feedback or comments? I really would love some feedback because like I said, we can take this charter and we can strip it down to just something much more basic. I did notice that there are a couple of things in here that would have to be tweaked anyway. I need to point this out. Add another email that pointed out that the select board terms here are not currently accurate as to what we do. So select board members, three of whom serve staggered three-year term, two of whom are serving one-year terms, that needs to be amended.
And Charlie, the health officer is a three-year term.
Okay. But again, like we, we don't necessarily have to have that baked into a charter, if that makes sense. This was kind of like, if you wanted to just throw it all on there and have kind of the full framework of what we'd have, this is kind of the framework we'd be looking at. But we don't necessarily need to have, you know, all of that in here.
I think going through all this process, we might as well just put it all in and then it's there if we ever need it in the future. It looks like it's quite a process to do and my feeling is we might as well just put everything in and then it's there for future.
Yeah, kind of cover your bases.
Yeah. Again, just to put it out there, the flip side of that is that if we put something in the charter and then want to change it in the future, we have to amend the charter and then the legislature has to approve the charter. And I'm not saying that they wouldn't do it. The two things there are that it can be a little bit of an arduous process. You know, it has to go through committee, it has to go through both houses, it has to pass both houses. Things that are generally not controversial tend to go okay. Other things don't, you know, like something that was in the news in the past couple of years was when, I think it was Winuski, maybe Montpelier passed a charter amendment that would allow non-citizens to vote in local elections. I don't think the legislature approved that or maybe Scott B. voted it, I can't remember. So anyway, like there are instances where the legislature doesn't approve charters. I will point out that I have talked to Felicia and who was in government ops, which is a good thing as far as this goes if we want to get it through. And she is working with her committee chair and the committee attorney to draft a basically a placeholder bill so that if this passes a town meeting, they can then run it through the legislature potentially this session. If not, we'd have to wait until the next biennium. But that's where that stands. Yeah, Larry, I saw your hand come up. Yeah, go ahead.
Charlie, the proposed charter, does it have any other changes that are to advantage of the town or the select board?
Does the charter have any other advantage to town or the select board? It's a good question. I mean, it formalizes, it formalizes the means and process of governance, I guess, which depending on how you look at it, could be, could be a good thing. You know, for example, like we currently now have a conflict of interest policy that all the select board members are asked to sign and adopt, right? We currently have a personnel policy. If those things are baked into the charter, a future board would not be able to say, hey, we're just going to scrap the personnel policy because it's in the charter. So, so there is, there is a, there is kind of a, and again, you know, there is a thing of like, depending how you look at it, you know, we are either formalizing it as a community and saying this is how we're going to roll going forward or we're tying our hands in a way. And that's why some of the governance things, you know, it's not to say that it can't be undone, but it's a little bit more of a process. And just to point out to whoever is still not going to identify themselves in the chat that we're not technically making charter changes. We do not have a governance charter right now at all. So this is a new charter, not an amendment to the charter.
So we could just do like line 20, local options tax and that's it.
One, one option, one option would be, one option would be to have like one and two statement of purpose, general law application, and then just have number 21, local options tax. That would be an option. Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
Charlie, if I can ask one question, I think I know the answer, but I just want to clarify it. So let's say we use the local option tax to pay for the sewer project that we're, that we're working on. And once that project is up and running and done, we want to, it's the will of the board or the people, whoever, to, to remove the sales tax and get rid of it. It would have to go through that same process of, you know, changing, modifying the charter, bringing it to the town meeting, or the board would have to do it first, then the town meeting and then the legislature, correct?
Yeah, so let me, I just want to bring up, apologies, give me one second. I just realized I had the wrong draft sitting in front of me. So I just want to bring up the right one. But if you look at the draft, there's two, two things here. One is that if you read the local option text, part, I believe the draft that you've got in front of you specifically says that the proceeds go towards debt service on the, sorry about that. Let me, here I go.
Are we looking at the draft January 18th, 2022?
Yes, yes, we are. I had the wrong one. So if you look at, if you look at number 20, and you go down to like the third, like third or fourth line from the bottom, assuming I'm looking at the right one now, it should say, shall be set aside in the sewer reserve fund to assist in the repayment of debt obligations related to the construction of municipal wastewater system in Montgomery Center and Village. And so, all right, whoever's in the chat, you're welcome to hang out and listen. But if you're going to be disruptive like that, like you're going to be removed from the meeting. So thanks. Yeah, so, so in that clause, we could take that part out and the charter could not dictate what the proceeds go to and the board could and just have the proceeds come in. We could leave this in as a mechanism to ensure that proceeds go just to that sewer reserve fund and nothing else. That language mirrors what was in the article that was passed at town meeting last year. And we could, I guess, I'd have to make sure the language was legally appropriate. But I think to your point Darren, we probably could amend it to actually say the local option tax expires when that debt obligation expires. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I was trying to figure out if the last sentence of that clause meant that we didn't have to go through the arduous process of changing the charter just to, oh, to repeal the tax once we're done.
I'm sorry. Yeah. So to that question, yes, the town may repeal the local option tax by an Australian ballot vote. That is correct. Yeah.
So theoretically, in a worst case scenario, the town could two years from now or three years from now decide they don't want to pay for the sewer bond anymore through the sales tax and they could just pull the chain on it. It sounds like to me. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, all right. I was just trying to make sure I understood it. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I was overthinking your initial question, but all of that thing, all of that is correct that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So, so the vote we had was, did it say it needed to be the sewer reserve fund that money was going to? Or I can't remember. The local option tax vote we had, did it say it had to go to the sewer fund or was it just general?
The local option tax language in the draft, the local option tax in the draft does indicate that the proceeds go to the sewer reserve fund.
I think Mark is asking about the previous vote that we had where the townspeople approved the local option tax, right, Mark?
Yeah, correct.
If there was specific language there that said that it was going to service the debt.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the previous article passed last year at town meeting specifically said that the proceeds from the local option tax would go towards a payment on the debt service.
So I would say we'd have to keep that in there, the sewer reserve fund. Because that's what the people voted on, so.
Yeah, legally, I mean, like legally, we don't have to. But from a process perspective, it seems like a fairly good idea.
It, it seems to me then that maybe we should be putting in this local option tax for a specific period of time that would service the debt on the municipal wastewater system so that all of those things line up.
Yeah, I guess the challenge there is going to be in passing this in the charter. At this point, I don't, I don't know if we could come up with like a time and date certain when the bond would be paid off. I think we can estimate what year that would be. If we, if we played it out right. You know what I'm saying? Like we have, we have to make sure if we put an expiration date in the charter that it was like, we're damn sure that's when it's going to happen. Because the other mechanism would be that when the, the bond is paid off, then the board at that time would put forward an Australian ballot vote that said, hey, you know, we've, we've used this to do what we said we were going to do. Town, like, vote to repeal it. Hold on, hold on one second, Larry. Yeah, go ahead, Emily.
So then maybe that's the route that we need to go. I'm just, Darren brought up the point that the last sentence says the town may repeal the local option taxes by Australian ballot vote. My understanding of that would be at any point in time, the town could do that. And then therefore, like, then therefore there's a big gap in funding to service that debt. So somehow, I feel like there needs to be language to cover. If we're saying that this local option tax is to service the debt so that we're not saddling the, the townspeople and the taxpayers with any additional tax increase for this wastewater system, we need to somehow stipulate that the local option tax remains for the duration of that debt service.
Yeah, I see what you mean. Yeah, I guess the backstop there would be that if the town did have an Australian ballot vote to do away with the local option tax, say in three years or four years or whatever, this town is still on the hook to pay that debt back. And there'd be like, the town would then have to do that out of like the general fund or figure out some other mechanism for it, right?
That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at because then that could impact the tax rate, like people would have to pay on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess I'm just thinking, maybe I'm being a little altruistic, but that like the voters wouldn't shoot themselves in the foot that way, if that makes sense. Unless they really wanted to, you know? But it's, but it's a good point that, yeah.
So I think what you're saying is that whether you put an expiration date in the charter or not, people still have the right to do an Australian ballot vote. So that's sort of a moot like amendment.
Yeah, I guess this is a good question. If there was an expiration date baked into the charter and you have the right of repeal, the question there would be what's supersede what, right? Like if you have an expiration date certain and a right of repeal, those two things could conflict. So that I'd have to, we'd have to get a legal opinion on that. Larry, yeah, go ahead.
You might want to consider verbiage until such time the bond is paid off. Or possibly even a dollar amount, if you knew what the bond was going to be for.
Okay, yeah.
Larry, thank you. That's like a really concise way of, I guess, what I was trying to get at.
It was, that was free, Emily.
Perfect.
Yeah, so I guess the, 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 the thing would be that again, I don't know if one would supersede the other, right? Like if you had until the bond is paid off and you had the right of repeal in there, like, does the right of repeal supersede until the bond is paid off or does it not? Does that make sense to people like, well, like, because that would create potentially two conflicting provisions there? But we can certainly look into it. I can certainly look into. No, actually, the way these work is that if you're in a public meeting and you've been asked multiple times not to be disruptive and you continue to be disruptive, you can be removed from a meeting. So you're welcome to hang out if you want to, but just, thank you.
Charlie, getting back to the point at hand, I, I think that it is definitely worth questioning and talking to the attorney who drew up this paperwork to see how we make sure that we're not impacting anybody's tax rate. Because, I mean, the voters have pretty clearly said that they're not on board with that. So how do we put language in that isn't in conflict, you know, with its own amendment, I guess?
Yeah. And I can get, I can get clarity on that. And then we can, we can make that call. Because this, just to be clear too, like this is not, this is, this is still draft and changes can be made after this hearing before the vote. This isn't like fixed. Barry, I saw that you popped on. Did you have any questions or comments on, on this? If the town voted to end the tax, the burden would be on the water district. The, the burden would be on the water district to repay the debt on the note. Is that what you mean, Barry? Because I would have to, I would have to do some more research on, you know, legally who, who that defaults to. At the end of the day, I think the water district is the town though, right? Technically, so.
So, so do we have to decide now whether we put just a local option tax into the charter or the whole thing?
No, I think what happens, what happens basically tonight is to get feedback for the board and then the board, yeah, and the board would then say, okay, so like, you know, here's what we're going to put forward to the voters. And then we amend it. And then when this is voted on, I mean, the, the warning, I mean, the warning, the charter language then goes out like in the town report. It has to get posted a number of places and then a copy of the charter is placed in every, every ballot, ballot box booth at the time of the vote. So a voter can inspect it right there too. Yeah. Darren, I saw you come off mute. Did you want to jump in?
No, no, I'm fine. I'm just, I'm just. I'm just, uh, enjoying the conversation. It's very educational. Appreciate it.
Any other thoughts? Anybody's got? All right, well, if no one else has any thoughts or feedback, um, you're welcome to reach out to the board by email. Any follow-up or any questions? Um, the board will make the call on, on amending it, um, and moving forward with it. And we'll be meeting later this week to do all that and adopt the warning. Um, this, just to clarify to you, the agenda for this meeting tonight was amended uh, last Friday to, uh, also have this be the meeting where the board adopts the warning. Um, we have to do that this week. When I amended it, I put the cart before the horse. The budget committee hasn't fully baked the budget. That's gonna happen Thursday. And so Thursday night after the budget committee meeting, it's a special meeting of the board. The board will, um, adopt, adopt the budget. I really appreciate whoever's in the chat. Be great if you actually have the balls to come off and say who you were to, but I appreciate it. So. All right. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Charlie.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Bye.
Thanks, Charlie.